Good evening, Planning Commission members, city staff, Director, and general public. I would like to call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Chairperson Morales.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Cuevas.
Present.
And please note that Commissioner Lomelli is not with us tonight, and we do have a vacancy.
Thank you. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda. Are there any corrections to the agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no corrections to the agenda for tonight's meeting, and I would like to confirm that we do have a quorum with three commissioners in attendance. We also have City Attorney Austin Ching and City Attorney Kristi Garcia with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, are there, are the public comments, Director? Can you please lead us?
Yes, Madam Chair. So at this time, the public may address the Planning Commission on any items listed on the agenda, including non-agenda items that are within the Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda for tonight's meeting. As a reminder, please show courtesy to others while providing public comment and direct all comments to the chairperson. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, are there any staff communications?
There are no staff communications. Thank you.
And next, can we get the approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission held on November 19th, 2024?
I move to approve the meeting minutes for the Planning Commission meeting held on November 19th, 2024.
Can we get a second?
I will second.
And we'll take a roll call, please. Chairperson Morales.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Medina.
Aye.
And Commissioner Cuevas.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, next, we're gonna be moving on to our public hearing for the first item on our agenda.
Yes. Madam Chair, I will, so item two on tonight's agenda is a public hearing item relating to Resolution Number 01-25 for the revocation of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19, which allows for commercial cannabis activities for the property located at 8019 Slauson Avenue. Viviana Esparza, the city's planning manager, will provide a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The item before you tonight is for the proposed revocation of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19 related to commercial cannabis operations conducted at 8019 Slauson Avenue in the city of Montebello. To provide you with the background on the city's cannabis regulations, in September 2017, the city council adopted Ordinance Number 2399, which amended the Montebello Municipal Code to include Chapter 5.90. This was followed by the adoption of Ordinances 2400, 2404, and 2405, establishing additional regulations. The purpose and intent of Chapter 5.90 is to allow for the processing of cannabis permits and enforce rules and regulations related to the cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, non-storefront retail delivery, and micro businesses of medical, medicinal, and adult-use cannabis and cannabis products. The city's cannabis program requires that all cannabis operators obtain approval of a conditional use permit and have an executed development agreement prior to operating cannabis activities within the city. A total of 24 conditional use permits have been approved as part of, have been approved by the Planning Commission for cannabis activity, all of which have executed development agreements. Of the 24, 12 are currently active and operated under at least one of their approved license types. RZ Capital and Development LLC is one of the 24 conditionally-approved cannabis operators. However, they currently hold an inactive license status as they have significantly failed to fulfill their obligations pursuant to Development Agreement Number 04-19 and for failure to comply with the conditions of approval of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19. Please note that the staff report states that RZ Capital is currently active within the city, but for the record, I'd like to clarify that RZ Capital is not included as an active operator. RZ Capital received the applicant, the Planning Commission's approval for Conditional Use Permit 04-19 on June 4th, 2019, which allowed for the operation of cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and non-storefront delivery activity at 8019 Slauson Avenue. And that was followed by the execution of Development Agreement Number 0419 between the city of Montebello and RZ Capital on July 8th, 2019. RZ Capital has failed to meet their contractual obligations to the city of Montebello as it relates to Development Agreement Number 04-19. City records indicate that RZ Capital is delinquent and paying at a minimum $112,000 in community benefit fees and has failed to submit their quarterly and operating fees, I apologize, community benefit and operating fees, and has failed to submit their quarterly financial reports since April 2024. The city has attempted to work with RZ Capital, providing them with numerous opportunities over an extended period of time to pay their required fees and correct their standing with the city. Within the staff report, you will find a timeline detailing official communication related to fees between the city and RZ Capital from August 2023 to present date. Within that timeline, you will also find that in May 2024, Mr. Zachary Brant, who represents RZ Capital, agreed to a payment plan consisting of four payments to be made across four months, allowing him to come into compliance. Of the four payments, Mr. Brant only made the first payment that was due on June 1st. Due to Central, due to RZ Capital's failure to fulfill their obligations and in accordance with the Montebello Municipal Code, Section 5.90.090, and Condition of Approval Number 39 of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19, city staff has denied RZ Capital's business license renewal request, resulting, resulting in their current inactive license status as of October 2024. And now pursuant to Section 5.90.090 of the Montebello Municipal Code, failure of a permit to pay the requisite fees shall constitute a breach of the development agreement and is grounds for revocation of the Conditional Use Permit. In addition, under Section 17.80.020B, any zone variance or Conditional Use Permit may be revoked and nullified if it is found that the Conditional Use Permit or zone variance has been or is being used contrary, contrary to the terms of or conditions of approval or is in violation of any statute, ordinance, law, or regulation. The request for revocation of Conditional Use Permit Number 0419 has been determined to be exempt from environmental review pursuant to the guidelines of the California Quality Act, Title 14, Chapter 3, Section 15321, Class 21, enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. Now, this, this project or this proposed revocation has been duly notified, and on December 19th, 2024, the public hearing notice was mailed to property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the subject property, uploaded to the city's website, and transmitted to interested parties. And on December 20th, the public hearing was also published in the Whittier Daily News. Now, at this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 01-25 approving the revocation of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19 related to commercial cannabis activity at 8019 Slauson Avenue due to the failure by RZ Capital and Development LLC to comply with the conditions of approval applicable to Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19 and for failure to fulfill their obligations and commitments pursuant to the Development Agreement Number 04-19 and Montebello Municipal Code, Section 5.90.090. And make a determination regarding the revocation of Conditional Use Permit Number 04-19, finding that it is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the guidelines of the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code, Section 21080, Subdivision B9, California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Chapter 3, Section 15321, Class 21, enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. And this concludes my presentation tonight, and if the commission has any questions for staff, we'll gladly answer those for you.
Are there any questions, commissioners, staff, city staff at this moment?
So are the violations mainly the lack of payment or the inability to make payments to the city, the violation of the agreement?
That's correct. It's in violation of the development agreement.
Thank you.
I would also like to note for the record, Commissioner, based on your question, code enforcement, there is also a condition that, it's in our municipal code as well, that code enforcement should be allowed to inspect these cannabis facilities upon request, and our code enforcement division was denied that access. I believe it was last year. We can get the exact date if you need it. Okay.
And we have two speaker cards, correct, Director?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one for each item. So for item number two, which is the item before you today, we would open the public hearing, and I could call the public, the public comment card.
All right. At this moment, I would like to open the public hearing.
So we have a comment card from Mr. Zachary Brant. Please approach the podium, state your name, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Zachary Brant, owner, operator of RZ Capital and Development. As far as the payment plans, I don't really know where to start. I was the first operator in the city by square footage. I'm by far the smallest. I've paid $166,250 into the community benefits fee program. I've also paid $73,321 in quarterly cultivation fees. These are off-the-top fees, like, not after taxes, all that. In 2024, my total gross revenue was $195,000 for, or $195,466. I brought $20,000 tonight to make another good faith payment. I emailed Mr. Columbia. I didn't receive a response. As far as not allowing them to come in and inspect the building, we had already had our business license revoked, and we're currently trying to speak with the city attorney about it. So it was just my lawyer's advice, let the, let the lawyers handle that. So that's, you know, anytime they can come in. I welcome you guys to all come in and see what's going on at the business. Just give me a call, and we could do that. As far as the payment plan, for 2023, we're talking to staff about fixing or modernizing the cannabis program. It's because the fees are kind of, I'm paying, my $50,000 is the same as somebody that's 10 to 20 times larger than me, with 10 to 20 times the revenue. We both have to pay $50,000. I don't mind paying my fair share. As I said, I paid $166,250 so far into community benefits. I've been requesting a payment plan that's reasonable and feasible for my business. It's been denied. In January, I met with the city manager and Mr. Columbia, and we didn't really get anywhere in that meeting. I verbally asked for a meeting to talk about it. I got an email requesting a $10,000 a month payment. I just responded like, that's not possible for me right now. Can we meet to discuss it? No response. Like, I don't know how long, a couple of weeks later, it was $22,000, $200, $22,250 a month for four months. It's kind of leaving me scratching my head, like, I couldn't pay $10,000, so now I'm supposed to pay $22,000. At the same time, a collection agency reached out to us, Kenham, on behalf of the city, because the city wasn't responding. They said, they're not going to respond to you. You're dealing with us now. So I agreed with them to $6,500 a month. Paid them within, like, a day. I got a letter from the city attorney saying I had to pay the entire $89,000 or my license would be revoked. So in a matter of a week, I went from paying, having an agreement that's doable at $6,500 to getting one letter for $22,250 from the planning department, and then another letter from the city manager, or city attorney. Just, it's gotta all be paid at once. So, you know, I'm just basically running a one-man show. I have several employees that are part-time, but I'm trying to make everything work. I'm a small business. My entire life is invested in this. If you revoke my license, I won't be able to work in cannabis in California ever again. It's like a death penalty for an operator. I just want a chance to make things right. I want a chance to build, build the business, work with the city to build the the industry in the city and the industry in the state overall. I'm not a big operator, as I've said. You know, I didn't have millions of dollars coming in. I don't have a bunch of partners. I don't have huge backing supporting me. Everything is my, myself, basically. Do you guys have any questions for me? There's kind of a lot. I did like a quick little outline. If I could pass out to you guys for review. I don't know if that helps or hurts or, or what, just... Can I give that to you to give to them? There's kind of a lot in there. I don't, you know, we've talked mul, yeah, they're awesome. Multiple times, Mr. Columbia, you've heard me say my piece over and over again. I thought we had some great conversations when we first started talking in 2023. Felt really positive about the direction we were going. And then this year, when the new city manager came in, it was kind of just like a, you know, it's this way or no way at all. I'm not trying to pull one over on anybody. I'm just trying to survive. I'm requesting a payment plan, and I have, like I said, $20,000 here with me tonight to go towards that. I owe $66,750 in past due community benefits. The other $50,000 is this year. Every July, it comes up. So, that's a new, I don't think it's past due yet, but I don't, I don't know the exact language of it. But I am super open to working something out. In fact, I'm begging for it. I don't really have too much else to say about that. There's nothing really groundbreaking in that outline. It's just kind of bullet points of what I just talked about. Sorry about the formatting. My secretary's been out of town for the last four years.
We'll, we'll pause.
No, and as far as the not making the, filling out the quarterly thing, April was the last time I was invoiced. I wasn't invoiced in July, I think because my business license was already suspended or whatever. Yeah, I mean, aside from that, I'm not afraid of hard work. Like I said, I was the first one here. I've been here. It's been a tough, tough go. I'm not really willing to give up. You know, if I wasn't producing good product or helping people, like, that'd be one thing, but it's really just the issue with the city that is my biggest hurdle. And I'm really hoping that we can work something out.
So, if I, if I may, Madam Chair, I'd just like to, and does that conclude your comment?
Yeah.
I think it's important to note here that there are sort of two necessary regulatory documents to operate a cannabis facility in the city. One of those being a development agreement that is under the purview of the city council. The other being a Conditional Use Permit, which is under the purview of the Planning Commission. The, the Conditional Use Permit is before you tonight. There has been a violation of that Conditional Use Permit. Per the conditions, in the code, we've followed the process that is spelled out. There, there are, there is criteria for the revocation. This does meet that criteria. Specifically, that section is 17.80.020 of the Montebello Municipal Code. And there, you know, there has been a failure to comply with the required elements of the approval. So with that said, I just want to make sure that, and I'd like the city attorney to chime in, I know, we, this body does not have the ability to entertain discussion regarding the actual fee structure or any type of payment plan for that matter. That is not within the purview of, of this body, and truly, this, this item, although related, is not directly connected. So I just wanted to make sure that the commission is aware of that, and the city attorney, if you would like to add anything more.
Yes, Director Columbia is correct. Excuse me. This commission really has to act within the authority granted to it by the city council within the municipal code. And with regards to this hearing in particular, you know, these proceedings are governed by Chapter 17 of the municipal code. So the criteria in that section is clearly laid out as well as the, the procedures necessary and the findings necessary to make a decision. And with regards to any sort of payment plans, things of that nature, as Director Columbia mentioned, that is part of the development agreement and within the purview of the city council. So in essence, this commission and this advisory body does not have the authority to accept any settlement payment or come to that, any sort of agreement for, for that payment. Really, it's strictly to consider whether or not there was a violation of the conditions of approval or any other regulations. And if so, then pursuant to Chapter 17, 80, 40. If a body conducting the hearing determines that any one of the factors listed is present, it shall revoke the zoning variance or Conditional Use Permit. This language doesn't provide this body with a whole lot of discretion, unfortunately. So if the commission does find that those violations did occur, that, that is the required ministerial result of that finding.
So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
So if, for us to really engage with the applicant in regards to anything other than payments is probably okay, but payment process or development agreement is not something that we're, have the ability to decide on. So our focus is very narrow as to our obligation, I think the city attorney clearly stated it. You know, we, we can only focus on almost that point and nothing else. We're very restricted to what we can do. There's no point in inquiring about, you know, well, how much time do you need to bring, you know, come up with the money or what else can we help you with in regards to that? Because it's not within our authority to, to assist in that way. I, I want to call it that because I would like to, but, you know, not within our authority or ability to act or decide on anything related to that. Okay, that, that helps me understand. Thank you.
So would this be a decision to hand it over to, to the council, right? Director or?
No, this, this, and I'll let the city attorney shed some more light, but there, there is the ability for an appeal, but the decision to revoke the Conditional Use Permit rests with the commission.
Okay.
So unless appealed, it would not go to city council.
That's correct.
So just to clarify, and I think I understand it, but just, you know, to clarify, if, if we revoke the privileges that are granted through the Conditional Use Permit, they still, meaning the applicant, has the ability to appeal that decision to city council to overturn that and return to the status of an active conditional, approved Conditional Use Permit. Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Well, I want to bring it back to the staff if there is any questions for Mr. Brant at this moment.
Well, before we, we close the public comment, if I may address the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I would like to close the public hearing.
Oh, no, I, I wanted to address the, the applicant.
But to bring him forward.
Just to make a comment.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, as you heard, our ability to decide on this matter is very limited. And as far as, you know, what we can do for you in terms of, you know, your ability to negotiate anything in terms of payments or get more time, I think our hands are tied. And as, as much as you, you know, made a compelling argument as far as why you feel that it's, we should be given more time and, and be allowed to keep your Conditional Use Permit, I, I think the way I understand it, maybe, you know, may not be something you agree with. I think our ability is going to be very limited to, to do anything other than decide on a, on whether you should keep it or not. Anything else, I think, after it goes beyond this point from our deciding body, you, you have more maneuverability in terms of negotiating anything to either negotiate any kind of payment or, you know, overturn any decisions that are negative to your business. You have to be beyond this decision, you know, body-making group to the city council.
Because I haven't really gotten any responses.
Well, I think we have to get through this process first. But thank you. I just wanted to address you. Thank you, sir.
And I would like to make one additional point of clarification. The discussion and findings that this body is required to make isn't necessarily whether or not the permit gets revoked, is that's a ministerial, or, you know, it's basically whether or not the violations existed. And if they do exist, there's no, unfortunately, no discretion, and the permit does have to be revoked.
So we're obligated pretty much to act on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, definitely, it's Um, yeah, I mean, definitely, it's open to discussion whether or not the violations existed. And, you know, that is a, that is a fact-finding part of what the commission is required to consider. But again, you know, there is an appeal process to the City Council. So, you know, the, we have to be careful about exactly what we are authorized to do here. And, yeah, is there any questions with regards to that?
But just to be clear, the, the violation is that the agreed-upon payment is not being made.
Correct.
And we have an outstanding invoice. And that's a violation of the development agreement, which terminates the conditional use permit. So it's very simple. I mean, the way I see it, difficult and bad situation for the applicant, but for us, it's very specific, and there's no leverage for us to kind of negotiate anything.
Right, and that, and that is based on the code sections included in Chapter Seventeen. So it's, it's all laid out there in black and white.
Thank you.
I just have a, a quick point of clarification. Do, do the applicants know ahead of time? I'm, I'm assuming as part of the, the conditional use permits, applicants are aware of the fee structures that are in place before they sign, right?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, that is correct, Mr. Medina. There is a structure laid out for community benefits in the development agreement that is, you know, agreed upon by both parties, including the city and the applicant. Those agreements are executed. We, we have executed copies of all of those agreements, which in essence are contracts, right? So this would be a breach of that contract. Our finance department does send notices to all active cannabis operators within the city in advance to let them know that these fees are due, as you would any other bill, right? And they are the ones, in essence, that track the progress. And when those, those payments are not made, that's when we're made aware of it.
Gotcha. And I do see that there's, there's quite a lot of staff communication in, fairly in advance of any of these fees being due. Is there a mechanism where the applicant can claim hardship? There is not?
No, and I, and I believe, and I'm going to look at Viviana because I know she's been reviewing these agreements. I believe the agreements actually do not provide for any hardship or, you know, flexibility when it comes to the actual payments themselves. And am I correct?
No, no, you're absolutely correct on that.
And, and I'd like to just bring up a point that I, I don't know if it's inappropriate to bring up or not, and I can be corrected if I don't, I shouldn't. But it, it does sound like there's a little bit of disparity between the development agreements in general for large businesses compared to small businesses in terms of the fees that they pay. And that's not for me to decide, or I don't really, you know, we don't need to argue that because it's not within our authority. But it's something that maybe needs to be negotiated or discussed with City Council. And that's probably through an ordinance for the whole entire city, not, you know, but definitely not something we can, you know, should be even talking about here other than, you know, beyond, beyond that, right?
Yes, that's correct. That would be outside of the purview of the Planning Commission.
Does, I'm sorry, and I just want to clarify. Does the development agreement also have a, a requirement from the applicant to keep up with his fees, go up with the fees?
Yes, there, there are two, I believe, the, the community benefit fee, which is across the board, it's fifty thousand for each job, is due on July first of every year. So that, that is clearly laid out in the development agreement. And then the fees, depending on the activity, those are required quarterly. So there are, there's a set sort of, you know, standard for when payment should be made in the agreement.
I guess my question is more related to, well, since, will the applicant also, could the development agreement also be revoked through City Council?
I mean, any development review and compliance review will go through City Council with regards to the development agreement. So, you know, certainly, I think, that, that is a possibility. Yeah.
Okay.
And I, that, important, so the conditions of approval of the CUP require compliance with a development agreement. So I hope that helps provide some...
I'm sorry, say that again?
So the conditions of, so the CUP has conditions of approval. Those conditions require compliance with the agreement. So that's why, how we, you know, how we ended up with this revocation.
I see. Wh- which one comes first, or they at the same time?
The, so, from the way, I mean, I believe these, all these CUPs were, were done before probably any of us were here. But the CUPs were approved first, and then the development agreement followed. Because without the land use control or the CUP, right, which runs with the land, it's a, it's an entitlement that allows you to, to do an activity, right? In this case, it would be cannabis. Without the CUP, you have no opportunity for a development agreement. And our code requires both, so it's a two-step process. So the CUP would have come first, followed by a development agreement.
So if the request to revoke the CUP is, is with us now, does that mean if this moves forward and the CUP is revoked, does that mean that the development agreement is also in jeopardy at this point?
That, that is correct, and, and I think I'll ask the attorney to confirm, but there's already been a breach of that development agreement or contract, if you will. And it's been laid out in the staff report, therefore, I mean...
Right, I, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily think of it in a temporal sense in that regard, but these are documents that are tied together, both of which require compliance. So when there is a violation, it does affect both the CUP and the DA. And really, what comes first? They're really both tied together, but, you know, we have to consider what, what's within our authority to do so. And the City Council will consider what, what their requirement. But yes, the, the violations do violate both the, the DA as well as the CUP.
And just one point of clarification, Madam Chair, if I may. Should we allow, I know that Mr. Brandt, and not only provide a public comment, but he is actually the operator, he's operator, or representative of the operator, should he be allowed to have an opportunity to provide a rebuttal in this case?
Yes, as the applicant operator, I believe that it would be fair to him to do so. So, Mr. Brand, if you have any rebuttal?
Thanks. It's been a while. Good to see you guys again. As far as the development agreement, as you put up there, in 2017, the program was adopted. And 2019, in July, we signed our development agreement. So it was a long time of negotiating that. And when it got to the point where I just couldn't keep paying rent in hopes that the development agreement gets what we want in it, we'd send a, a redlined edition back, it'd be like six to eight weeks before the city attorney would send it back. So I did feel pressured to sign. I knew that, you know, the two years that had passed, it's like, that's two years of other businesses in a brand-new industry getting rolling, getting a snowball going. Like, the industry was changing rapidly as time went on. So I had to get open. I had to sign that. Otherwise, it could have been, I would have been out of business before I went in business and lost a bunch of money. With regard to the fees, it's not just my business or his business that were affected by these fees. I'm just the smallest one. I think all but maybe one or two businesses had trouble paying, even the, the really big guys, and they were able to work out some sort of payment plan. I know I'm beating a dead horse with the payment plan thing here. I just wanted to say that. And a reasonable payment plan, like, some of these guys have like forty-five hundred dollars a month that are ten thousand-plus square feet of canopy. I understand you, you know, it's pretty cut and dry here, what you guys do tonight with the, the process. I hope that I will be able to appeal. I hope that I can speak to whoever it is about a, a future payment plan in order to get in good standing again. So, you know, I lose everything if this, if I lose this, like, everything, everything. So I think that's it. Any questions I can answer for you guys or anything like that?
No, no questions, but just a comment, you know. We appreciate you being present here today, of course, and, and addressing us. As, as you, you know, stated, and correctly so, our ability to act on this matter is very specific and to the point. And, you know, there's no more options other than the one that we, where we're going, and I, I think you can see where we're going. So I, I think you also stated correctly that, you know, you're entitled to appeal this decision tonight through City Council, and there's more negotiation room there with them than you have with us. Our ability is very limited, so I'd like to apologize in advance from, you know, what I think the next step that we're gonna or about to take regarding your business. And, you know, I'm sorry that things haven't worked out, but I want to wish you luck.
Thank you.
All right, are there any additional comments or questions for Mr. Brandt or as a commission?
I think that the next step is going to be to make a motion, right? So I'll go ahead and make the motion.
I'd like to close up public hearing. And, yes, Commissioner, would you like to?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Zero One Dash Two Five, approving the revocation of conditional use permit Number Zero Four Dash Nineteen for the commercial cannabis activity at Eighty-Nineteen Slauson Avenue.
I believe the staff report also requests the determination that the CUP revocation is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section Fifteen Three Twenty-One, Class Twenty-One enforcement actions by regulatory agencies.
Yes, with that included.
Thank you. I will second.
Right, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairperson Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chair Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuevas?
Aye.
And motion passes.
Another item on our agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, item three on tonight's agenda is also a public hearing item related to Resolution Number Zero Two Dash Twenty-Five. And this is for the revocation of conditional use permit Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen, which allows for commercial cannabis activity at Eighty-One-Two-Seven Slauson Avenue. Viviana Espaza will also provide a presentation on this item to provide you with the facts that are also in your staff report. Thank you.
Item three on tonight's agenda is for the proposed revocation of conditional use permit Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen related to commercial cannabis operations conducted at Eighty-One-Two-Seven Slauson Avenue within the city of Montebello. The city's cannabis regulations were established in September twenty seventeen, where the City Council adopted Ordinance Number Twenty-Three-Ninety-Nine, which amended the Montebello Municipal Code to include Chapter Five Point Nine Zero. This was followed by the adoption of ordinances Twenty-Four Hundred, Twenty-Four Oh Four, and Twenty-Four Oh Five, establishing additional regulations. The purpose and intent of the chapter, of Chapter Five Point Nine O is to allow for the processing of cannabis permits and enforce rules and regulations related to the cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, non-storefront retail delivery, and micro-business of medicinal and adult-use cannabis and cannabis products. The city's cannabis program requires that all cannabis operators obtain approval of a conditional use permit and have an executed development agreement prior to operating cannabis activities within the city. A total of twenty-four conditional use permits have been approved by the Planning Commission for cannabis activities, all of which have executed development agreements. Of the twenty-four, twelve are currently active and operating under at least one of their approved licenses. Central is one, Central LLC is one of the twenty-four conditionally-approved cannabis operators. However, they currently hold an inactive license status as they have significantly failed to fulfill their obligations pursuant to Development Agreement Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen, and for failure to comply with the conditions of approval of CUP Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen. Please note that in the staff report, we've stated that Central LLC is currently active within the city. But for the record, I'd like to clarify that Central is not included in an active, not included as an active operator within the city. Central LLC received the Planning Commission's approval for CUP Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen on November fifth, twenty nineteen, which allowed for the operation of distribution and non-storefront delivery activity at Eighty-One-Two-Seven Slauson Avenue, followed by the execution of Development Agreement Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen between the city of Montebello and Telum Enterprises, who was the original applicant or slash DA owner, the development agreement owner. And on May twenty-seven, twenty twenty, the City Council approved a First Amendment to Development Agreement Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen, authorizing the transfer and sale from Telum Enterprises to Central LLC, in which Central LLC assumed all assignable interests, rights, duties, and obligations under the Development Agreement and Conditional Use Permit. Central LLC has failed to meet their contractual obligations to the city of Montebello as it relates to Development Agreement Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen. And our city records indicate that Central LLC is delinquent in paying at least one hundred thousand dollars in community benefits and has failed to submit their quarterly financial reports since July twenty twenty-four. The city has attempted to work with Central LLC, providing them with numerous opportunities over an extended period of time to pay the required fees and correct their standing with the city. Within the staff report, you will find a timeline detailing an official communication related to fees between the city and Central from August twenty twenty-three to present date. Within that timeline, you will also find that in May twenty twenty-four, Mr. Jonathan Specko, who represents Central LLC, agreed to a payment plan consisting of four separate payments to be made across four months, allowing him to come into compliance. Of the four payments, Mr. Specko only made the first payment that was due on July, on July first. Due to Central LLC's failure to fulfill their, their financial obligations and in accordance with the Montebello Municipal Code, Section Five Point Nine Zero Point Zero Nine Zero, and Condition of Approval Number Forty-One of Conditional Use Permit Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen, city staff denied Central LLC's business license renewal request, resulting in their current inactive license status as of September twenty twenty-four. Pursuing to Section Five Point Nine Zero Point Zero Nine Zero of the Montebello Municipal Code, failure of a permit to pay the requisite fees shall constitute a breach of the Development Agreement and is grounds for revocation of the conditional use permit. In addition, under Section Seventeen Point Eight Zero Point Zero Two Zero B, any zone variance or conditional use permit may be revoked and nullified if it is found that the conditional use permit or zone variance has been or is being used contrary to the condition, to the terms of the conditions of approval or is in violation of any statute, ordinance, or law or regulation. The request for revocation of conditional use permit Number Twenty-Six Dash Nineteen has been determined to be exempt from environmental review pursuant to the guidelines of the California Quality Act, Title Fourteen, Chapter Three, Section Fifteen Three Two One, Class Twenty-One enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. On December nineteen, twenty twenty-four, the public hearing notice was mailed to property owners and occupants within three hundred feet of the subject property. And the notice was also uploaded to the city's website and transmitted to interested parties. And on December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the public hearing notice was published in the Whittier Daily News. Now, at this time, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number zero two dash two five, approving the revocation of conditional use permit number twenty six dash nineteen related to commercial cannabis activity at eighty one twenty seven Slauson Avenue due to the failure by Central LLC to comply with the conditions of approval applicable to condition, conditional use permit number twenty six dash nineteen for failure to fulfill their obligations and commitments pursuant to development agreement number twenty six dash nineteen and Monobello municipal code, section five point nine zero, point zero nine zero. And also make a determination regarding the revocation of conditional use permit number twenty six dash nineteen, finding that it is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the guidelines of the California Environmental Quality Act, Public Resources Code, section two one zero eight zero subdivision B nine, California Code Regulations, title fourteen, chapter three, section fifteen three two one, class twenty one enforcement actions by regulatory agencies. And this concludes my presentation tonight. And again, staff is available for any questions.
Thank you. All right. Is there, are there any questions for staff on this item? So I think, are there any questions for, um, Mr. Brandt?
Testing, testing.
Okay, I would like to open the public hearing. And we have a speaker card for this item?
You do, Madam Chair. Uh, Christian Nitu, Nitu? And, uh, yeah, please just state your name, uh, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Christian Nitu. I'm one of the partners of Central LLC, speaking on agenda item number three. I have a very similar, we have a very similar case to, um, the previous person who spoke, Zach. So I won't get into too much detail because we pretty much follow along the same path. Uh, we are also a small business. Um, we were, you know, one of the groups that started the organization to talk with the city and work on a more progressive payment structure for our business type moving forward. Um, so we've felt like we always had good communication with the city. There's one big fact that I don't think the city has, uh, worked with us on that I do want to state in this public forum. So, in two thousand twenty three, on, uh, May seventh, uh, we were actually the victims of a grand larceny and grand theft at our building. Um, this resulted in about two hundred thousand dollars worth of product and equipment being stolen out of our facility. Um, I actually was the person who filed the police report, uh, which is case number two zero two three dash zero 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 two nine five zero. Um, this is a really important fact because, uh, this prevented us from doing a lot of things as a business after two thousand twenty three. Um, we've been engaged with the, uh, CD TFA. We've been engaged with the DCC, which is the the body of the organization looking over all the cannabis licenses in the state of California. They understand that we have an ongoing investigation where, uh, someone came into our facility. We had products stolen, um, which prevented us from doing a lot. We've spent a considerable amount of money over the last couple of years on arbitration, lawyer fees. Uh, this has prevented us from doing a lot of things, um, including, um, our development agreement. But we have paid our taxes. We've, you guys have come to our facility asking for access. We've given you access the entire time, uh, that you've requested it. And we understand that this commission's power is only to get us to what inevitably is, uh, in front of the city council. So I wanted to use this forum to present and, uh, make everyone aware.
Testing, testing.
Okay, perfect. So, we shall continue?
Can I keep going? Okay. Um, I'm not actually sure where I left off, but, uh, effectively, you know, we we read the development agreement. We understand that the reason why we pay development fees is because of our land use type, and we need to cover the cost of that to the city. When we read what the community benefits fee is for, this includes things such as enforcement, the police helping. You have to understand that, you know, we haven't had, I filed this rapport almost two years ago. I haven't had one person from the Monobello PD follow up with us. You know, we've lost a lot of money, and like I said, we've invested a lot of money. And we feel like we have to go get our own justice at this point. Um, you know, we're dealing with the state, and they're working with us on a payment plan. They're working with us on enforcement. They're trying to help us survive because unfortunately, where this industry is now from where it was in two thousand nineteen seventeen is very different. And we continue to invest money in this community, give local people jobs. But again, when we're paying these fees and we're meant to pay these fees, why do we have to not get any support? When we've had such a big issue like this covering our end? We've talked to the city. We've tried to work out, uh, possible payment plan, haven't heard back recently, um, as Zach has said before. We just want an opportunity to work through this issue collectively. So we're asking you not to appeal, um, our, uh, CUP. Allow us time to work with the city council, uh, collectively so that we could continue to do business. Uh, as I said, we unfortunately were the victims of something that happened to us that was out of our control. We have worked extremely hard to get back to a place of neutrality and continue to, uh, run our business. But we won't be able to do that if we don't have support from the city. And that's, uh, all of my public comment for today.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for, um, applicant?
Yeah, I have, uh, comments, if I may. Thank you. Just, uh, um, wanna say that, uh, you know, you make a compelling point about your business and the operation and the support that you're seeking from the city. And, you know, it's, uh, I think, you know, we get it, we understand it. And, you know, the the negotiating ability and the room for that negotiation i- is going to be at the next level above us. But, you know, I think you make valid arguments that, uh, can help, you know, um, negotiate something that can make sense for the city. To, you know, like you said, and I think you're right. When this first started, this business first started, things were different. Now, you know, that has changed, so maybe adjustments are necessary uh, so that, uh, you know, the business model can actually work for for both sides, so. But again, that that ability is not within this deciding body tonight, but good luck. But again, that ability is not within this deciding body tonight, but good luck.
Am I allowed to rebuttal? Or is that the end?
Yes.
I just wanted to pass my, a copy of my police report to you guys, so you can actually read it and see it. I only unfortunately brought one. I didn't know we could get multiple, but I just wanted to put that out there. And I have a question, too. If a commission decides to approve of the agenda item, what is the priority upon which goes to a city council agenda?
I believe that that matters when you file the appeal, but I believe it.
Yeah, I can leave you with that. I took copies, so, yeah, I just, I got it today. Yeah.
Sorry about that. I believe it would only go to the city council to be addressed and heard if an appeal is filed. If not, the decision tonight is final.
Okay. Yes, that's correct. And then when you do file an appeal, it does have to go through the process of scheduling the hearing, properly noticing the hearing, et cetera. Usually it takes place, I believe, within the next one or two hearings for the regularly scheduled meetings. But, you know, you can follow up with us later once you file an appeal, and we'll let you know when the hearing will occur. And there are notice requirements, giving you enough time and making you aware of when that's going to take place. So if I understand it correctly, we get ahold of you guys to file an appeal. There's process in that, and then, then it would possibly go, or it will go to a hearing. And then at that hearing would be the city council hearing, or would that go to another hearing?
It would go to the city council.
City council here. Okay, understood. Got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Right, so I would like to close the public hearing. And can we get a motion?
I'll go ahead and motion that we approve the revocation of the conditional use permit number twenty-six dash nineteen related to the commercial cannabis operations conducted at eighty-one twenty-seven Slauson Avenue. With the SEQA. And with the adoption of the, with the determination that the conditional use permit twenty-six dash one, dash one-nine is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to guidelines of the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second that.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes. Chairperson Morales?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Medina?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuvas?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Attorney, were there any additional recommendations that were needed to be addressed, Randy?
No, I believe the resolution and the SEQA finding were the extent of the findings, is there?
Perfect, thank you. And are there the other? And our next, our next item on our agenda?
Planning Commission orals.
Okay, okay, perfect. Our next item are the Planning Commission orals. Are there any, Director, can you please?
I think it's opportune for the commissioners.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is a new one for me. You know, it's a challenging situation for both the business owners and for the commissioners. But I want to thank the city attorneys that are present that assisted us, assisted us through this process, so thank you both.
Yes.
Not an easy thing for us to, you know, terminate a business or make a recommendation for a business to be terminated. But we wish the applicants, you know, good luck and we'll see where this goes. But, you know, this is a new one for me, and thank you all the staff for the reports and the information that assists, you know, helps us decide on situations like this as hard or as difficult as they may be at times, so thank you all.
Absolutely, I must agree. It was a first and where we were limited, right, to address different points. But we do wish you best of luck. All right, any other communications or orals? Perfect. I'd like to, this meeting adjourned.